Well, it's it's five o'clock and a quorum is present, so I will call the meeting to order.
You're just sick.
And as for a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting. I'll go with words approved.
I'll try get worded.
Moved and seconded. All in papers. Any opposed, please say nay.
Thank you.
Any members of the public who wish to address the board? There are none. Wow, I'm feeling really brisk right now. Slow down for a second there. Brad wants to get back out of saying. Yeah, I mean, my movie starts at six forty-five, so we've got time. Yeah, twisters. So the first item on our agenda for discussion is a strategic planning update. And we approved this strategic plan, and now we have a pretty important responsibility to monitor progress on the strategic plan. So we get these updates so that we can meet that responsibility. And I'll just start by saying fantastic graphics explaining the that just made it really easy. Jen, yes, no? Well, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Great. So I'll just open it up to discussion. We'll have questions or comments about that. I'm going to ask a question. CMO?
City manager's office.
Ah, okay. What is it?
City manager's office. CMO, I could spell that out.
Somewhat unrelated, but has that has there ever been issues with voting here? Like at your voting location, have you ever had clashes or has it ever been contentious?
No.
Problem?
No, the only wrinkle that has happened in my time here has been because of the way our accessible parking is in front of the library. They're required to block off the end of the street for vehicle access, which obviously we do in other parts of the county, but that's we haven't had any philosophical.
Okay, just wondering because our husband at other places in Johnson County, not here. But I don't think it was even necessarily in Iowa City, but just wondering as we're coming up on that season. I don't remember if we have another update before that time. I was just thinking of it.
I usually kind of check in with staff the day I make sure everybody kind of knows what's going on and what the message is, but we haven't had issues like that right now.
It will be a sad, I would say, for the petitions. But we just don't have to take it seriously. The others obviously they can add. But traditionally on presidential election, at least the weekend before, if not the week before, we have the whole thing blocked except for Halloween. There are children's parade on Halloween and make priority over the, oh, I'm so sorry. Do they vote on which costume they'd love?
We can do that. Now, I've already been asked to get that going.
I told them I'd be so sorry.
It is a no school day. It's gonna be huge.
I'm interested if there's any more to hear about the effort to collect materials in the languages of the International Writers' Book Show participants.
Um, so we we have to do a meeting with them soon to get started. Currently writing a collection plan, so what languages we want. And then we will share that with the University of Iowa and they'll be able to kind of look at the authors and write.
Okay. I I just personally adore that program. Although someday ask me about the big bureaucratic fight I have with it.
Great overlaps. They they already do programming, so become one of their books here while they're doing their programming and then also from the collection as well.
Other comments or questions?
Page eight where it says, oh, I don't know. It was under communication, I guess. What is the our new opportunities for book and customer feedback is created via surveys at point of sale? So do they fill out that survey at home or do they do it right there?
Katie, can you speak to that?
So can we repeat?
Be page eight of this agenda. It says, new opportunities for book and customer feedback was created via surveys at point of sale.
Oh, right. That comes from the receipt. So when they when they make a purchase, they have an opportunity to fill out the survey through their J O receipt.
Okay.
And they're also whoever's checking them out explains to them that they can fill it out right then and there. And a lot of people can just fill it out right when they make their purchase.
Do we ever get to see the or will we be able to see the results of those just to kind of see what people are saying?
Yeah, I actually have a we have a report that I'll be sharing with our fundraising committee at a meeting on Monday, but I can.
Maybe the next.
Kind of interesting to see.
We're really trying to find those kind of contact opportunities to get even little pieces of feedback. We did the similar thing with the QR code and URL that our marketing department created, so we can embed that in different materials and kind of change the the landing posts. But the more we can hear, the better.
Great. What's the timeline on the internet going away in safer things? A year.
What does gamify mean? I've never seen that word before. Is that to make into a game?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a it's a neologism.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't exist in the dictionary, probably.
Uh, an online dictionary will have it.
I feel like I'm not sure, but it maybe started with there was sort of you could earn badges for completing tasks. Some of that evolved into more, I don't know, words for behavior.
Always glad to have a new word.
Are you expecting to have presenter set or you did say that you were having Iowa presentations coming up too? It says attended in in bug. This next one is tonight. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we we typically have elsewhere there. I know we have at least two coming up. I think we have two.
Thank you for the update, Paul Swir. And it's it feels like the cadence, it's appropriate for progress is gonna yeah.
Thank you.
Which brings us to the Library Board of Trustees annual report. Maybe you can just introduce what this is.
This is an annual report that the board does. It's used in a couple of different places. It's available to the city in the budget process. And we also put it on our website as part of the resources about the board. So it's sort of a high level view of the responsibilities and accomplishments for the board. We've used several different approaches to this in the past. Last year felt like the most effective process we had tried yet, where the leadership team put together sort of a long form draft so that at this meeting, there can be conversation about what would the board like to keep in the report, remove from report, are there other things that trustees would like to see reflected? The next step will be we take that feedback back, make the changes that were requested and bring another draft forward or approval. So we intentionally sort of included lots of things with the idea that there may be things that people would like cut. There may be other things added. But conversation is very welcome. I would say that there's some things that have traditionally been included, like the long list of policy review. That's sort of been a longstanding practice. And again, feedback on on any of the content is more than welcome.
One of the functions, you know, on the website is, in a way, it's a summary of the year's minutes. If you at a glance want to see what did we work on this year? So even for board members, it's kind of helpful to look at sometimes.
I've got a few stylistic points. I mean, they're not substantive, but on the assumption that less is more, when you write, instead of in the second line, to act as the word be can substitute, so in order it's as to be the governing committee. And I would I think that we need to at least have a some brief identifier of these Senate and House bills. The numbers are here, but something that lets the audience know exactly what they are. Just very briefly, I think. And the same thing with ARPA. I mean, not everybody's going to know that, including me, what that acronym means. It's down what number ten?
Thank you, Karen. Others? I didn't really see anything I wanted to delete.
Nice to see the short form. I mean, I think it's interesting.
Yeah.
See it this way.
Yeah, and it's, you know.
So all this work, it seems like we did a very long time.
Yeah.
Most of us here. It's nice.
So I do have a question about our our final goal to review and approve a plan for approving building space. I take it that you're confident that we'll we'll get there in this coming year?
I am. So we have a large CIP for flooring and some other changes on our public floor for next fiscal year. We budgeted in the NOB budget for this year consultant money to to make a plan for some of that. So I think there's multiple pieces of urgency to that project, and we I'm confident that we will have a plan. The work will not be intended to start the following year. The other part of making that plan is the plan will be used to craft details for proposals for vendors who are the project, so getting it on the series of projects.
And then I had one other stylistic, I guess, thing for Lucy and Bonnie, where the board members are listed, maybe if they so it shows that we weren't we're only nine people. At the time.
Yep.
Anything else? Well, we can move on to the director's report. Do you have anything to add to the written report also?
I have a couple of things to add that have happened since we worked with Sam Helms was appointed area president for twenty-five minutes.
Congratulations, Sam.
So in sort of an atypical move by A L A, it was affected immediately. So Sam was the president-elect right now. And then will become president and then be in the past president of the law for a year after that. We're proud and we're thrilled to support it, excited through that work. As I indicated in an email, there was damage to the rental space on Saturday after a peddled incident. The first door into that space, it was cleaned and patched immediately. We've ordered the replacement glass, but all of the exterior glass in the building was a custom green glass, which created on order unless they happen to have a piece of art in their project. So we were hoping for a little bit tighter turnaround, but we're expecting it to be two weeks before the material is available. That'll be installed right away once it's done. So it's securely patched. It's not a it's not a problem as far as access. Unfortunately, Merit hasn't opened house until the first week of August. And so we will expedite the install if the material comes in before them. But my guess is they but that's so that's being taken care of as possible. You'll notice we're back to the burgering. The CIP is mostly done in here. We've got the new furniture and things like that. Wanted to make a note about the coloring, which the walls were repainted. We opted to keep the current color because we know that part of the consultant work, the larger CIP will be looking at the color palette and possibly making some changes. So instead of taking this down to light, which could be a significant amount of work, we thought we'd refresh with the color that it is and then lean on that stage to decide if we changing it again. The painting was burned. And the piece of art on the way we found this was donated by the chairman. He was a previous trustee. It wasn't donated intentionally with this project, but the donation happened over the advantageous time, so we can and we will get the rest of our work back up. But we're excited about the technology improvements in this room. A lot of them will sort of be invisible, like you don't feel like anything's not working a bit smoother, but it took a lot of work from the IT department, from the facilities department. And we're pleased to have this room and meeting fully back in use. We have similar updates in B with New Check to Loki on the screen. And I think works. He's up to it, so hopefully answer that.
I'm just curious that when the window was broken, so it's a nighttime event. Who notified you and how's that get done?
So the police notified Brad, the building manager. And Brad came in to interact with them. Check it out. As soon as the area was sort of cleared, the public police, he was able to go clean up. And then my vendor came on to, I think Brad did the pattern in the vendor kid and later that day to do the assessment. So I came in to check it out at maybe seven fifteen. And the last one was on even taking the information as you made up.
I'd like to take you up on the offer of if you're looking around the facilities, I think especially the infrastructure that's really interesting, so yes.
Yes, it's it's amazing. And the facilities crew here is so strong in their knowledge and skills. It's always great to be able to go into their element and kind of see that backend of the library. And I love seeing the pride and the ownership of those spaces. I think it would be great for anybody who's interested to to go to peek at it into the bowels of the building. Oh, one more update of this happened also is we're having some water intrusion issues from the valley. There was a wall collapse on a building across the aisle from us a year, a couple of years ago, I don't know. And the water management system was closed when the wall was rebuilt. It's affecting the buildings department and the rental space. So we are actively with the O C. I think we're gonna have some readings next week to look at how down spout can be done a little bit different in our neighborhood. Facilities was able to put in some sort of stopgap measures in terms of the other blockage, but we're we're gonna have to make an investment in in that area. It puts some major facility pieces that we're
Anything else for the director's report? On to the adult services report. Any late breaking news, Jason?
I was just realizing I should have gotten I'm very excited.
Any questions or comments about Jason's report?
Have the results of the browsing version.
Oh, uh huh.
I did a survey. So I have also and it's basically like five stars for one person said something about I didn't enter certain crafts.
Were their crafts were fire?
Well, it's sort of like, can't, you know, it's like this hour we're doing crafts, so I'm ready to turn the crafts. There's no way to sit back. There were a lot of recommendations for classes for future, but also for if like breakout sessions.
Who was on the house band?
Oh, yeah.
It's a big band.
Gretzky, Paul, Amanda, Hannah, Olaf. Yeah. And a guest drummer. So assuming you were pretty much. Yeah, and any board members are drummers. They do need a drummer. I I said band banter. Because they practice in my basement.
The library band always gets a huge and positive community response. People are always excited. So so to do
I really changed when the band set. Something like two like yeah. Speakers, which is nice, but
Anything else for Jason? Sam, congratulations and thank you for your Community Access Services Department report. Any additions or should we just dive in?
I think it's important to know that I'm the band group.
Oh.
If you have any other questions.
Okay. I'd like to ask about releasing the book by the schedule. Yeah, it's when genuinely moved to tears about the work that is done here. That's amazing.
It's funny, obviously, that that's not attracted.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming you don't give rides to six-year-olds. You don't let them ride in the box?
Of course not. I mean, did you see the summer reading video? Please don't put the stage right in the notes.
So that's through the summer reading video. Frog was kind of like to. And if you want to get those costumes back out, I've seen lots of librarians having an election with Elephant and Piggy versus Penelope Rex and Walter so far, but also Frog and Toad could be an option, just saying. You could have your own election. So kitchen. So don't be having a running mate, hot dog, duckling?
Duckling.
The cookie? I don't know. The bus. It's up in the air, multiple candidates.
Anything else? So that brings us to the President's Report. And the only thing I will report is that John brought to my attention that I made a kind of a serious error. We've got committees without leadership. And so they are so I think I will ask from the Finance Committee, if anybody will volunteer just to serve as convener to make sure a meeting happens when it happens, when it needs to happen. Let me know if you volunteer, otherwise I'll sign. And likewise for the Advocacy Committee, which is
I'm gonna nominate Robin.
Sure. I'll appoint her.
Not here.
That's fair.
But she and I can hash it out and we can reconvene on that later.
Yeah, so I will. My report is, I will be appointing conveners for each of our two standing.
Oh, I did have a question. Adult service or not adult services, community access. It says you're looking for a graphic designer. Did you have, is this an additional graphic designer or did the one you have leave and you're looking for anyone?
Great question. So this is replacing the font, who has moved on. And we have a moment of interview in the process, so that's been two months. And also, Katie, are rocking that panel space in pretty exciting now.
Great. Great.
Are there any announcements from the members? Okay. I don't think we have reports from advocacy or finances.
Obviously, this is kind of unfold until our next session.
Yeah. Yeah. And then foundation members, so I see that we have the memorandum of understanding. Does that need board approval? Do I just sign it on my own authority?
Which doesn't require approval. It says right on the on you.
Oh, okay.
So this is the copy for your statement.
As you all see, that this is this is consistent with our discussion at the MOU budget. This is one of the components of the revenue that comes into the NOB budget. The MOU formalizes the agreement to transfer those funds to purposes and outlines for grants and to support the development. Any questions about that? Okay, there were communications included in your packet. Is there any comments or questions about those?
I guess my only comment is, you know, and I know from time to time we get these issues around crime that either happens through the library, in the library, or around the library during my time here, but I mean, are you confident that the library is safe?
I would say I'm confident that we keep the library as safe as possible as a public space, especially one in the core of a downtown area. There's often leadership team discussion about does this kind of article belong in the word packet? And we we err on the side of let's include more. But a lot of the the issues that happen around us impact us because we want to communicate with the community about what's happening. We want staff to feel supported and we want to, you know, make as many adjustments to keep people safe as possible. But we are a publicly open to the public. We are in a state that that has made decisions around availability of weaponry. It has an impact on on how the public behaves. But I I do think that we we take appropriate measures to stay safe. Anytime an issue like this happens, and I would include the the shooting on the head mall. Leadership team intentionally takes steps to work with staff to make sure if there are concerns that wasn't addressed, we would we kind of make a plan for if the community has inquiries. And I try to walk through it as carefully as possible. I think that there's always a lot of them will happen when things happen, and we care very deeply about keeping people safe. So I think I think, yes, I don't have, when I come to work, I don't feel like I'm at risk. I I do feel like we need to pay attention to our surroundings and take the steps that we can. But public service has changed in the past few years. I think it will continue to think as as society kind of evolves.
Do you guys do Alice training?
We do. We did one last year, so we've got, we were talking about scheduling another one. We do. Um we did one last year, so we've got we're talking about scheduling another one. Um. We also have continual conversations about. How we work with the police department and social service agencies to. Um. So we're able to use the tools we have the best way we can. Um. And and that's always an ongoing conversation because we know that um. That there's a lot of impact. However, we need that to be those. I would also say there is a a need for more social service support in the community. We know that there's more. We need more street outreach positions. We need more people um. Engaging before issues emerge. Um but but we are doing what we can. I think if there's ever a specific um. Thoughts from trustees about ways that we could change those experiences or make things, you know, do things differently, we would be very open to the conversations.
Yeah, good. Good question.
What's happened with that reprehensible group of kids who? Eat up the.
Oh, yeah.
The sleeping man.
I think that that's still.
Have they been identified?
I think it's still an active and uh active. Um.
Investigation.
Investigation. Jason, have you heard any differently?
Yeah.
And um. The you there are cameras from outside the library that that. Documented that event. Um so obviously we work in concert with law enforcement to to supply the information that we have, but. We have not gotten any updates. There's stuff concluded.
Which are low lives. I mean, geez.
Hey. I think we can move on to the consent agenda. Uh which consists of approval of the minutes of our last meeting and dispersments for G L. That motion to improve the consent agenda.
I think we got motion.
Thank you. In a second. Here we have a second. Uh any discussion? No, it's a consent agenda. You can't have discussion. All in favor of approving consent agenda? And opposed? All right, thanks. And we'll just take a quick look at the agenda for our next meeting, which will be, let's see here, that's August. So we will have the fourth quarter um. Financials and statistics. Um and so the. Um finance committee will review those four ahead of time. Uh and then we'll review the library use policy and the alcohol and the library policy and get. Three department reports. Sound good to everyone?
Hmm.
Yeah.
That is the first day before I have a city school starts. So if I'm not here, it's because I'm still at school. Right. I completely forgotten in a flurry of start of school year. I'm afraid to text and remind.
The I was looking through the library dispersment. Was June just a higher month or usually I'm looking at this landscape. So maybe that had a some kind of psychological effect on me thinking this is a lot.
You can often have your.
Just different events and stuff you were doing.
A lot of programming and any plans spend over that we haven't ticked off the list yet. That would be the last month.
All right, um. I believe we have completed the business we scheduled. So I declare the meeting adjourned.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.